Welcome to the City of Peoria Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission is composed of volunteer citizens appointed by the City Council. The Commission is the designated hearing body for a range of land use applications, including general plan amendments, rezones, conditional use permits, and amendments to the zoning code. Upon recommendation by the Commission, general plan amendments, rezones, and zoning code amendments proceed forward to the Peoria City Council for final action. For conditional use permits, the Commission will make a final decision subject to appeal. All hearings are conducted in accordance with the rules for procedure requirements to allow an impartial and efficient hearing, and all Commission meetings are open to the public under the Arizona Open Meeting Law. Each case will be called in the order in which it appears on the agenda unless otherwise announced during the meeting. Once called, city staff will give a presentation of the case, followed by a presentation from the applicant if they so desire. After the applicant's presentation, members of the public who have submitted a speaker's request form will be called to speak by the Commission Chair. The applicant may be called to provide additional information, clarification, or a rebuttal. The Commission will discuss the case, may ask additional questions, and take action. Any member of the public wishing to speak must complete a speaker's request form and hand it to the planning assistant at the end of the dais. When speaking, please limit your comments to a maximum of three minutes and try not to repeat statements already made by others. We welcome your comments, and as fellow citizens of Peoria, we thank you in advance for your participation.
Good evening. Welcome to the December 7, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission for the City of Peoria. Before we take a roll call, I would like to personally welcome two new members to the Planning Commission. First, Doug Myers joins us, as well as Tom Konkowski. So, welcome, gentlemen, and thank you for making the commitment to serve our love of the little city. So, at this time, I'll do a quick roll call. Commissioner Viasenior?
Here.
Commissioner Myers?
Here.
Commissioner Konkowski?
Here.
Commissioner Alsop?
Present.
Secretary Waitman is not present. Vice Chair Nelson?
Not present.
And Chair is present. Thank you all. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items on the consent are considered routine in nature and will be reviewed and enacted by the Commission in one motion. No separate discussion unless any commissioners wish to remove and consider in full hearings. So, do I have any motions on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I motion that we approve consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any second?
Mr. Chair, I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. Commissioners, please vote. And the consent passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, new business, item 3R, Fresh Start Church Initial Zoning Z23-15. Staff?
Thank you. Good evening, Chair, members of the Commission. Hopefully, I don't overdo this with two microphones here. The case that you have before you tonight is for initial zoning. So, very often, we bring rezoning actions before the Commission for recommendation to City Council. Initial zoning is a little bit different and a little bit more perfunctory, and we'll get into why that is in just a second here. So, the applicant on an initial zoning is actually the city itself. And the reason for that is it is a statutory requirement that anytime land is annexed into the city, the city must then apply what's often termed translational zoning or the relational zoning that was from the county into the city. So, in this case, we're looking at a site at the southeast corner of 83rd Avenue in Akoma. That site's about three acres, and they're looking to go from County Rural 43 to Suburban Ranch or SR43. So, the reason behind that is that is the closest comparable zoning district that the city has to the county's Rural 43. So, as I had mentioned, this is somewhat in tandem with an annexation effort that is occurring for this specific site. The area that you see on the map there where it's labeled Fresh Start Church is the existing church property. The church acquired the two parcels in question and is looking to develop those as an annex or an additional component of their church. So, they're looking to bring that in, and they're actually under construction on the site right now. And this annexation would allow them to tie into city services, particularly city water services, so that, once the building's complete, they can all run off of the city's water service system for both the existing church component that currently does, as well as that piece that ends up being annexed. So, just to give you a little bit of information and background on the process, when the city goes to annex a property, we are only looking at areas that end up being within what's called our municipal planning area. And that is, you know, as we've brought before you quite a few times, our general plan, which lays out our land use and our vision for the city. So, it also defines where we want to end up growing to from an annexation standpoint as we move forward. So, this piece does fall within our municipal planning boundary and thus is an option for annexation. As I had referenced, there are some statutory requirements within state law that essentially make this an action that the city must carry out as a result of the annexation. That initial zoning action can occur within six months of the annexation, so it doesn't have to be at the same meeting or necessarily in tandem, but it does need to follow shortly behind within that six-month window. So, in this case, the annexation is falling on the December 12 City Council meeting, and then we are taking, or I'm sorry, yeah, the annexation is on the December 12. And then we would be taking this forward to a separate City Council meeting, the initial zoning. The notification does still occur in accordance with the city posting requirements. So, we put an ad in the paper, and we do post a sign on-site. And with initial zonings, there is no neighborhood meeting requirement. So, with a rezoning, you often think of those elements where you have heated neighborhood debate. You have input from the public. In this case, it's essentially conveying the same rights that already exist in the county to a translated version within the city. The city has not received any opposition or support in regards to this case. It was essentially no comment. So, as a result, the city finds that the city's Peoria Suburban Ranch 43 or SR43 is the closest comparable zoning district to the rural or county RU43 zoning district, and as a result, complies with those statutory requirements that would require the city or necessitate this initial zoning effort. As a result, staff recommends to Commission that you recommend to City Council approval of case Z23-15. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Gleason? Anyone in the public wish to speak on this matter? I'll open the public comment, close the public comment. I have no speaker request forms, so this one seems pretty simple. If no one has any comments, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I recommend approval of case Z23-15 to the City Council.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioners, please vote. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item 4R. It's a study session only. No actions will be taken. Accessory building regulations. I failed to see if there was any other speaker request forms or anyone else wishes to speak. I just have the one, but I think we're, I think I have them all. So, staff, if you'd like to proceed with your presentation again. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of Commission, I am back before you one more time to talk about accessory building regulations. And in this particular case, as Chair mentioned, this is an interactive discussion. We are looking for feedback from Commission. We've even provided options in your packet as well. So, let's start. An overview. There are three sections within the existing zoning ordinance that impact accessory buildings, and I'll touch on what those are in a minute, but illustrations are on the right. A little bit of background on this particular endeavor. We, there was an evaluation previously by the City Council Subcommittee on Codes. One of the recommendations was to look at what provisions or regulatory requirements could be streamlined and be more effective in their enforcement capabilities. This particular aspect was one of those that they sought to kind of review. And in going a little further on this one, accessory buildings, the enforcement is handled by one division. The regulatory aspects, including building, engineering, and planning, are all follow under the purview of additional departments. And so, that has made it a little bit of a complicated situation when we do have a code complaint. So, when we were working on this particular code amendment, the purpose was to provide balanced regulations which address the impacts and concerns from adjacent properties, and also, and in particular, improve the ease of use and streamline existing regulations. And this is both application by staff, our enforcement team, and for our residents who deal with this on a primary basis. And so, we'll touch on that a little bit more. So, some additional illustrations for you. When we talk accessory buildings and structures, what are those in particular? Pergolas, ramadas, sheds, detached garages, RV garages, architectural buildings. We are not talking about secondary dwelling units or ADUs. We are only talking about those items in particular. As I mentioned, these are typically installed after the home is built. It's primarily the property owner or contract coming forward and putting these structures on the property. Let's talk about some typical accessory buildings that you might see on a regular basis. Starting with ramadas. If you have a pool, typically, you might have a shade structure out back or want to have barbecue, et cetera. So, these buildings in particular range anywhere from 10 to 15 feet. On average, they range 150 to 400 square feet. The roof can vary in material. So, roof pitch can be flat, can be angled, can be cantilevered, any number of things. A permit may be required. In particular, when you reach 200 square feet of covered surface, and depending on if it's open air or not open air, or in the case of the photo in the dead center, when you're running electrical, you would be required for a building permit in that case. So, in some instances, pool ramadas would be required to have a building permit. Next example would be sheds. Now, these range anywhere from 4 to 12 feet typically. On average, they're about 150 to 400 square feet. Again, as you can see, different roof materials. Sometimes, there's windows. Sometimes, there's not. Primarily, the two distinctions are no livable area on this particular case, and sometimes the pitch of the height on these particular ones, and with the size, you will be required a permit in some instances. So, I've illustrated that on the graphic itself. So, in the bottom left, once you hit above 200 square feet, building permit would be required. Once you run utilities, again, building permit would be required. Our next example, we're getting a little bit taller in size. These are detached garages, typically 12 to 25 feet tall, anywhere from 320 to 3,000-plus square feet on average. There is a variety of materials available. Some may have a livable area. These do require a building permit onsite. Our last example, RV garages. These are typically 20 to 25 feet in height. They generally range about 1,200 to 1,500 square feet. Often, many of these have a casita option, and yes, a building permit is required. So, we're going to look at these buildings in the regulatory context and perspective. So, our current standards right now provide restrictions based on height, size, and location. And as I mentioned in the last meeting, the last update occurred in 2004. It still had the three-tier system. It was just updating the three tiers, minimal increase to the size and to the height in that instance. What it did also provide is what we call dueling maximum building heights. So, you could be in one zoning district and have one height of 25 feet for your maximum. You could be next door in a different district and have a 25-foot height requirement. And so, there was not necessarily clear distinction between why that difference was there. So, key considerations when we were going through our analysis. The multi-tier setback criteria is cumbersome, and we'll talk about it one more time. Enforcement is challenging. When we do receive a complaint, it's a visual inspection. The code inspectors are doing their best case to identify size, height of the structure. Often, depending on where it's at, it's going to be a hard judgment call in that case. So, again, as I noted, regulations are under the purview of several departments. Building is enforcing the building code standards. Planning, we're looking at the setbacks. Engineering, drainage, et cetera. Depending on the size and type of these structures, you may even have a sprinkler component from the fire standpoint. So, they also review the building plans. All right, so common complaints that we do receive. Number one, the building is too close to the back lot area or side lot area, and the way that it's sloped on the roof allows runoff onto a neighboring property. There's often concerns about the height of the building in question or the condition of how it was constructed. And so, when we do receive a complaint, those are the items that we would typically be evaluating. For reference, if the structure was built without a permit and one is required, whether because of electrical or the size or the, et cetera, they need to come in with full set of building plans, go through the permitting process. If they're able to meet setbacks, then they just simply may have to open up some of the inside of the buildings, do an inspection, and ensure that safety components comply. Otherwise, they may need to move the structure or adjust the structure in order to come into compliance. If there is a setback issue, there are three options that we provide to homeowners. The first one is administrative relief, which is essentially a very small, oops, I made a construction mistake, and I have the ability within a foot or two, actually more, six inches, to say, we'll give you the six inches because you made a construction mistake. Anything really above that is in the criteria of a variance you're asking from a deviation from a building setback. In that particular case, you have state statute, which has five criteria in advance that they would need to satisfy, two of which often these particular buildings will not meet. First one is, is it the hardship self-imposed? Often, yes, they did not come into us to have the conversation. They've put the structure in place. They may be able to make adjustments by moving the structure and coming into compliance. Therefore, they wouldn't meet that particular test. Often, they cite it's a financial hardship. In this case, if there are alternatives that can be made to bring the building into compliance, we would have to recommend denial because they should pursue those alternatives to bring it into compliance. So, the variance is really more for there are conditions on the lot which make it challenging to have the same rights as other residents. And what does that mean? If you had a wash in the middle of your property, which makes putting your home very difficult, you might have to shift it to one side or the other. That's where the variance was intended to grant you relief from. It's not because I want something. It would be more like, I need this deviation in order to be able to have next door what my neighbor has and what every other... my neighbor has, and what every other zoning district has in that case. So, if those two options are not available, the third option is to move or remove the structure. In particular, I did identify, there was one instance, and it is illustrated in the top right-hand side. That was a 12-inch reinforced concrete pad, and then they put it with CMU block on top, and it was too tall, and it was too big. So, the only relief in order to make that work was to tear it down. And so effectively, when the owner submitted a construction estimate, that was a $70,000 bill that she had to incur for that particular structure. So, I keep, I identify that just to keep in mind when we're talking accessory buildings, we often are faced with challenging conversations when folks come to the counter, and what options we're able to provide them at that point in time. All right, moving forward, just as kind of, since we do have two new commissioners, wanted to touch on this one in particular because we've talked about it. How do you establish building and setbacks, and what does that mean? So, when we refer as primary building in the zoning ordinance, that's interchangeable with house or home. So, it's one and the same. When you're establishing your building setbacks, that's your developable area, and that's established at the front, the side, and the rear of the setbacks in the zoning district. So, if you take a look at the graphic on the right, the red shows the outline of the lot. The orange is intended to show you what the developable area is for the home, and that's including the home, the patio, any attached expansion needs to fit within that box. So, minimum setbacks for most of our zoning districts are side of five feet, rear of 15 feet. Now, if you are within that orange box, your maximum building height is 30 feet. So, yes, you can have a building 30-foot tall, five feet away from your neighbor on that particular case. Or, you can extend your house and be 30 feet tall, all the way back 15 feet in height. So, if you are within the orange box, your maximum building height is 30 feet. Our lot coverage is typically 50 to 55%. Why is that important? When you're talking about the home and any accessory building, you have what we call a bucket. So, all of those buildings put together have to fit into the lot coverage of 50 to 55%. So, if you've overextended and have this really gorgeous large house, and have nothing left to give in your lot coverage, you would not be able to put any additional accessory buildings in your backyard. So, there is a trade-off. So, think about if you have an R1-6 lot, which means minimum lot size of 6,000. Typical home size, anywhere from 2,500, getting close to 3,000, you've almost maxed out your lot coverage right there. So, your accessory buildings, anything that you put in your back would need to be included in that 50 to 55% range. All right, we're getting almost to the discussion point, but one of the requests from commission was, go back, look at some benchmarking, and tell us what you found. I can report with no uncertainty on this one. Absolutely, there's no uniformity in regulations within the valley whatsoever for accessory buildings. It gets even, there's an even large difference when you start talking accessory dwelling units, or those secondary dwelling units in the back, the casitas, the mom and, the mother-in-law suites, et cetera. In fact, when we looked across the board, there were distinct standards for ADUs. What does that mean? Most cities, when they had them, you had to have a minimum lot size. When you were putting those structures on, there was a maximum square footage associated with them, and they had separate setback regulations. So, if you were a shed, a garage, et cetera, those standards didn't apply, they only applied to those secondary units. So, what did we find? Basically, four general methods, and I'm stretching here, general methods were used to calculate building setbacks for accessory buildings. The location within or type of lot was used in Avondale, Mesa, and Phoenix. Buckeye and Tempe used a tier system. The graduated step-back approach that we had proposed last time is used by Chandler, Glendale, Goodyear, and Surprise. And, but wait, there's a hybrid in Gilbert and Scottsdale. So, using those last three items, the tiered system, the graduated step-back, and the hybrid, that was the formulation of what we're wanting to talk to you about tonight. So, let's get into proposed options. One, two items that we would like to do is, number one, any code amendment that potentially goes forward, we want to retain the prohibition in front yard. These structures cannot be in the front yard. What we would also like to do is unify that maximum building height across these structures at 25 feet. It is very challenging to say, oh, you're next door, you can only have 20, no, you're this other zoning district, you can have 25. There's no visual distinction, therefore simplifying it and creating a unified 25 feet, we think creates better equity for all of our residents. So, let's talk building setbacks and the four options. We have the refined tiered system. So, if you think our setbacks are good, we would like to make two small tweaks to them in order to help with enforcement. We have the simplified tiered system, kind of as the name suggests. We have a variation of the graduated and the hybrid step-back. So, let's talk. So, in your packet, I also provided a briefing sheet as well, but we can, well, we have online slices, and it's good. So, we have three tiers in this particular one. Our existing standards are if you're under eight feet in height, and you're under 200 square feet in area, there's no side or rear setback. Our engineering standards always say you cannot slope and cause runoff to go into your adjoining neighbors, so that doesn't apply. There are no building permits required because you're under the 200 square feet. Only when you run utilities, such as electrical and plumbing, that's when a permit would be required. So, our tier two is if you're between eight and nine feet in height, and here is the change, we would like to go from or to and/or between 200 and 300 square feet in area, then you are required a three-foot side and rear setback. We would also like to introduce the limitation that maximum one building above eight feet in height per side yard. So, you wouldn't be able to stack multiple accessory buildings in a side yard. It would be one per side. No change in the building permit requirements there, and no change to our last tier, which is in excess of nine feet in height and/or greater than 300 square feet. You are required to meet principal setbacks, typically the five and the 15. No additional requirements, and a building permit is required. I will note, there is an exception in the current code that if you are adjacent to open space or utility areas, they can request that the zoning administrator provide an exception to drop it down to three feet. And we have received a couple of those requests in the past, typically when they're adjacent to SRP easements, utility sites, things of that nature, and it's not an adjacent residence, and it's primarily open space area, we have allowed those exceptions to occur. So, I'm going to pause right there. Is there any questions? Mr. Chair, the code provides the zoning administrator the authority to make that call at that point in time, so it would be completed as part of the building permit.
What's the thought process on limiting it to one structure per side of the property?
Mr. Chair, great question. That is proposed from our friends in code enforcement. That is often, one of the complaints is typically a property owner will stack multiple structures together, and when you start combining them, the massing or the look of it becomes to a detriment to them.
Unattractive to the neighbors.
Unattractive.
To the neighbors. Okay. Commissioner Alsop?
I had a question going back, and this maybe outside of the topic of tonight. On the R1-6, you talked about the coverage ratio, 50% on R1-6. If there's, say, a corner lot, and the lot's 9,000 square feet, is that coverage ratio 50% of the zoning? So, it's still 3,000 square feet, or is it 50% of the square footage of the lot?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Alsop, it's 50% of the lot in question. And so often, when those, when those lots are oversized, either on a cul-de-sac, they are provided more generous allowances than other residents may have.
Okay. And additional question, where you added on tier two, the and/or. I know I may be tired today, but I'm not following the logic between the and/or. If you had an or, it would capture more. If you add in the and, it captures the same circumstances that the or would. Unless I'm not thinking of something, it just, it confuses me a little bit, and so I'm going to guess if I'm a little bit confused, some other people might be as well.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Alsop, the recommendation for the change is because of how we enforce it now, we usually, we will identify both provisions. It's the height and the size. When you provide the or only, what they can say is, well, I'm below eight and nine, therefore, they'll try to get around it through a different tier system. In this particular case, the and is more mathematically correct. It's written in English, but mathematically, this is easier for us to enforce, and this is the method in which we enforce it currently, is an and statement.
Previously, was it just or, or was there no language?
It was just or.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Nelson?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Lori, for your presentation. Just some clarification on some items. Do we make any, are setbacks, rear setbacks affected by alleyways? Do we even have those in Peoria? Does that take into account? Does that affect the distance that we allow or don't allow?
Chair, Commissioner Nelson, I'm trying not to get too technical in this piece of the conversation. So, typically, when we have a private driveway or an accessway, it is, depending on how it functions, the setback will be taken from that piece, and so it may, in some instances, impact the setback requirement because it may, when you are determining setbacks, it may function as a front instead of a rear condition, or it may function as a side instead of a rear condition, because the type of lot that it's determined to be changes in that regard. So, I'm trying not to get too technical. So, I'm going to phone a friend here, Chris.
Thank you, Lori, for that. If I can add, Commissioner Alsop, so if you think about some of our downtown districts, right, we do have some alleyways in some of our older areas of the community. So, Lori had mentioned a few minutes ago about the provision that allows a zoning administrator to make an administrative correction for instances where you butt an open space, or something like that. In most circumstances in downtown, in some of these older areas, you have a front, you have an alleyway, and you, but you're not, your rear lot isn't abutting another lot, you're abutting an alleyway, which is a right-of-way. So, that might be a circumstance that the zoning administrator could grant a brief, some modification to that setback in that case.
Thank you. Can I ask a couple more?
Go ahead.
No, just piggyback off that. So, I'm still struggling with why we have no setbacks on a tier one. It makes absolutely no sense to me. So, and part of the problem, part of what I'm struggling with is the storm runoff piece. We talked about, that's a concern, that's a trigger for complaints, and if I'm butting up a shed next to a fence, unless I'm putting a rain gutter on my tough shed, water's going to run into my neighbor's yard. So, how do we, how are residents supposed to address that? And then, let me ask kind of a second part to that. We expect people to maintain their sheds and keep them in good working order, to paint them, to put pest control around them, to fix the roof, to be able to get, I can't imagine you could do that without getting around them, without having to climb into your neighbor's yard to paint that side. So, help me understand why that's, that works, or why you think that's acceptable, because I'm just having trouble getting over that hump. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Nelson, I'm going to start off and then let Lori to answer the question. So, tonight, we are, just for clarity, we are presenting four options. This first option, this is the existing code with some minor tweaks. So, this is how we've applied it today. The standard has been in place for decades. So, you know, we have three tiers there. We were trying to simplify it a little bit without creating a lot of new non-conforming situations, but what we wanted to do is distinguish tonight the three new options from the existing code with some tweaks. So, this is the existing standard tonight. Did you want to add to that, Lori? Maybe I misunderstood then, so you're...
Go to the floor.
Yeah, I was going to say, just so...
This is existing plus, which is option one, and then we're going to present three other options for you tonight.
Okay, maybe I didn't let you hear far enough your presentation. So, we're going to be discussing that, that no setback option. I apologize then. I'll let you continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, it's a good segue into option number two. And we did hear from commission that the height was a concern adjacent to the property line. In that line of thinking, what we are recommending for a simplified tier system, now keep in mind, most wall heights are six to seven feet, okay? So, if, the first tier is, if you are under seven feet, then you can still maintain no rear, no side setback. When you're into that seven-to-nine-foot range, that's when you're typically going to have that runoff condition that's possible. So, in that particular instance, we are now recommending a three-foot setback off the side and the rear to accommodate and address that concern. So, that would be the second row in that particular one. Again, we would carry forward the recommendation to limit one building above seven feet in height per side yard. And in this particular case, we're streamlining and simplifying, the third tier is, once you're over nine feet in height, your principal setbacks. So, I'm going to pause. I'm seeing some confused looks, or some contemplation.
He always looks confused.
I appreciate that.
My gut, like, this feels like it's going in the right direction. I just, I'm having the same anxiety that Vice Chair Nelson is too. So, anyone else have any questions on this? Option two? Commissioner Konkowski, welcome to the show.
Yeah, and option two there, on the tier, on the second tier, you don't address the square footage any longer. So, we can have 800 square feet going along the back fence and...
Chair, Commissioner Konkowski, great question. We do that because of some of the challenges that our code enforcement officers do face because it is a visual inspection. Often, it is easier to address the height standpoint rather than identifying size to some degree without use of aerial imagery and coming back and doing research in that regard. Once you start getting over 200 square feet, again, you still need the building permit, and in that particular case, it doesn't relieve you of the lot coverage requirements anyways. So, once you've hit those triggers, you're coming in to talk to us, and we're going to, we'll probably either say, congratulations, you need to move it back, you got a building permit, et cetera. So, it does handle it. It is silent in this particular set of regulations, but it is handled through additional mechanisms.
Okay, yeah, I'm kind of with Chairman Fider there, that. I'm just a little confused. If I'm looking at my back neighbor's fence, and I agree that lowering that would be better, so we're, but we're still in that, you know, kind of seven-to-nine foot instead of eight-to-nine foot, but no limitation on how, what the width of that could be. It could cover my whole back fence line being, you know, a foot wide on this side. I don't know what he's doing back there, but he's hanging up all his tools or something, but I don't know how... but I don't know how to address that correctly. But maybe there's a square footage along the property line or something that, or not square footage, but linear footage, that would be a coverage or something, no longer than 20 feet or something. I don't know.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Konkowski, if I can provide a little insight, too. I think what we are looking to do with this Tier 1, there's a number of smaller types of accessory buildings, little garden, little tool sheds, that, you know, at a, when you're under seven feet, with walls generally six to seven feet in height, you're not getting a visual impact from a neighbor standpoint. You're also not getting a drainage impact, too. So in many cases, you're just not even aware that there is even a building back there because it's under the height of, the maximum height of that wall. So I think we're trying to address all of those scenarios where you have these smaller buildings that you may not even know that your neighbor has those because they're below that fence line. And we're trying to really address substantially, where you have buildings in that rise above that, what's a reasonable setback to have there. So I think this one is similar to the last one in terms of, we're looking at very straight requirements. You'll see in Option 3 and 4, we're looking at more of a, more of a math equation or a graduation to that setback. Here, we're just trying to establish, hey, if you're under seven feet, you don't have this one. If you go above that, so it simplifies it a little bit. But that's the, that's the thinking behind that, that first tier.
But without, in Tier 2, on Option 2, why not keep the square footage in there like you have in Option 1 on Tier 2?
Chair, Commissioner Konkowski, that's a great question. It's been a difficult conversation back and forth in terms of how far do you get into defining what your neighbor should be allowed to do? And so, again, we're trying to balance the rights of the property owner to provide quality of life in their backyard versus concerns from their neighbor. And so, go back in thinking in the, on the setbacks. So you may have a five-foot side yard condition, and all along that five-foot side yard condition, you could have up to a 30-foot-tall main building adjacent all the way down. There's no restriction in that regard. So we want to balance out visual aesthetic impact of what these secondary structures often are versus what you could have with the main home on that particular case. So again, 30-foot tall, five yard from your side yard, can go all the way back up to the 15-foot rear setback, if they so desire.
Okay. Thank you. You're good. Commissioner Alsop?
I mean, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but the reason we got into this was to accomplish two things, to make it easier for enforcement and make it easier for our residents. My general feeling is, we're making this more complicated than it was to begin with. You know, I'm a student of the Bible, and I'm like, wow, I'm seeing like the Pharisees up here over and over again. I mean, I just want to do what we can do to make this easier for staff and for the public without complicating the process. So I hope we're getting mindful of the whole reason we started this process to begin with, because I don't want to get to the end of it and realize, this is even harder for your average person to work around than we had to begin with. Just a general observation. So I appreciate your efforts in doing that. And, you know, my position is going to be steadfast to this. Let's keep it as simple as possible.
Vice Chair Nelson?
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick question. Is there any restrictions on the size of the accessory structure in relation to the principal building? Does it have to be no bigger than the primary dwelling on the property? Or can it be bigger?
Chair, Commissioner Nelson, in this particular case, there is no restriction. There is only one municipality that, there's a couple municipalities that, depending on the type of structure you select, there are size requirements. And I do feel for my brothers and sisters in the planning department who have to enforce that. If you're one thing, you're this. If you're another thing, you're this. It's a little challenging, because depending on what you classify it, yeah, there is a restriction in those cases. So we did not contemplate that. Again, we want to, as Commissioner Alsop identified, we wanted to keep this as simple and as straightforward as possible. And in doing so, height and setback criteria, we wanted to provide something that was much more linear in thought versus having to bring structure, size, et cetera, into the complication and the calculation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Villasenor?
What if someone is putting in accessory structure that does not fall neatly into one of these categories? A shed, a detached garage, or an RV, or a Ramada? How is that handled?
Chair, Commissioner Villasenor, I, the only, the only option that would not fall under this purview would be a necessary dwelling unit, because those are not permitted. The sheds, the Ramadas, the garages, secondary garages, et cetera, are all encompassed with these regulations. And so if you're under seven feet, you would be no setback on the side and rear. If you're between seven and nine, three-foot pushed back. If you're exceeding nine foot in height, regardless of type of structure, you're needing to meet the minimal, the principal setbacks for what you would have to have on a home in that case. So we make no distinction. I will give you, in one instance, one city says, if you're a shed, your max height is this, your square footage is this, and then you can only be located in this area. It's way too complicated. But to answer your question very succinctly, except for ADUs, which are not allowed, these regulations encompass all of the items that we're talking about this evening.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
We have two more options. All right. They are color-coded, so when we get back, and we'll review, so you can note the difference. In this particular case, this is a slight variation that we brought forward to Commission. So keeping in mind the thought of eight-foots-two-tall adjacent to the property line, first tier in this one is under seven feet, no side, no rear. When you go seven foot and above, remember the step-back condition. So every foot in height, you step a foot back. What does that look like? The graphic on the left illustrates that. So again, typical setback, side would be five feet, rear would be 15. So as you start to see, the maximum 12-foot-high building would meet a five-foot typical side yard setback. So it could be five foot along that side yard all along, because that's when your 30-foot height for your main building kicks in. It would still continue to push back in the rear as the height continues. So it could hug the side yard, but we need to continue to get closer and closer to the house as the height of the building comes, as the height of the building goes up. One-to-one ratio. Okay? So, questions?
Thank you. And where do you measure the height, too? The pitch of the roof?
Chair, Commissioner Villasenor, we measure it to the top of the accessory building. Very top.
The highest point.
Highest point. Any other questions for this one? Because I'll give you a slight variation.
Nope, not yet. Commissioner Alsop? I feel like, I'm feeling like we're going in the right direction for my taste, but go ahead. Commissioner Alsop?
Yeah, I just want to say, I like this. I hope this is like a compromise that everybody can live with. I'm a little bit more libertarian on this topic, but I can live with this, and this is what I would, looks pretty simple for me. I'd be curious to see what other people think.
But wait, there's more.
But wait, there's more.
If there's more, then...
I think the one thing that we're all consistent on, simplicity for the public and simplicity for staff, I think is fantastic, but it shouldn't be at the detriment of the aggrieved neighbor. I think that's, I think that's kind of what we're all, that's what I'm, that's what I'm feeling. So Option 4.
Option 4. All right. Similar but different. Option 4 is a hybrid step-back. What does that mean? If you're under eight feet in height, regardless of type of structure, you've got minimum three foot back from the side and three foot back from the rear. Once you start going above eight feet in height, now you're at a two-foot setback for every one foot in height. So what does that mean? If we look to the right-hand side, your starting position is three foot from the side and the rear. For every foot in height, you're, if you're nine feet, you're five foot back. That's your typical side yard setback. At 10 feet in height, you're at seven feet back. 11, et cetera. A 14-foot-tall building would need to meet both side and rear setback at that condition.
So Lori, just to be clear, in this example, if you had a 14-foot-tall accessory building, you would have a five-foot side setback, and you would have a 15-foot rear setback, because you're now entering that building envelope.
Those are the principal setbacks.
Correct. Yep.
Can you go back one slide to Option 3 example? What is city code for the height of our block walls? Is there a code standard?
Mr. Chair, this is a somewhat trick question. There is a minimum standard. We do not set a maximum standard, depending on, unless you're into a PAD condition or a PCD condition, where then the tall, how tall the wall gets, you start getting into a tiered condition to decrease the visual aesthetics of the wall. So we have minimums, we do not have maximums in that instance.
What's the minimum?
Sorry, the other way. Other way. Yeah. It's late. I'm...
So we have a maximum wall height, not a minimum wall height?
Yes.
Interesting. Okay.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, so we don't always require walls, right? We do in certain contexts, certain circumstances. But if you have a wall, in most flatland conditions, you can build a wall up to six feet, eight inches, right? Sometimes a lot might be along a, what we call a transportation corridor, a major arterial. At that point, we're going to require a minimum wall of eight feet tall. Sometimes we have hillside conditions where you have one side, it's a little higher than the other. That's where we'll have a little bit of variability. But to be, just to be, to keep it simple tonight, for flatland conditions, you can have a maximal wall up to six feet, eight inches, unless you're along a transportation corridor, but then it's eight feet.
Okay. Commissioner Alsop?
Another question, we've talked about principal setbacks. Are we in agreement that's five and five? Because my, a lot of zoning standards are five and eight in Peoria. So am I misinterpreting what a principal setback is?
Commissioner Alsop, typically, there is a minimum five, and it's often a combination of 13. So you'll have a five-foot and an eight-foot on the other side yard. They do vary by zoning district, but it's usually minimum five. And so for purposes of calculation this evening, we're doing with the minimum of five.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. You might, because in housing, you would say, okay, here's the eight-foot side, here's the five-foot side. For the sake of the homeowner, either side is going to be five feet for them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Villasenor?
Thank you. You had mentioned that the code enforcement is regulated, falls under several different departments, and that has proven to be challenging. Which of these options would best resolve some of those challenges?
Chair, Commissioner, we were expecting this question.
Oh, good.
It is a good question.
Can I win a prize?
You do, and perhaps not what you're thinking. So I may put him on the spot in the back in a little, but in the back. However, our code enforcement does not favor Option 3 and 4.
And...
Because there's a significant amount of math that needs to occur on-site. And so they would be looking for a more simplified, either keep it the same or the simplified tier system.
Okay. Can I continue, Chair?
Please.
Okay. Okay, well, that is, that's helpful. Thank you. So which kind of leads me to my next talking point, or question really, is that enforcement is challenging. Can you provide some context or explanation as to why it's challenging?
I'll probably start the conversation, and then I will look to Krista to chime in. So when we receive a code complaint, it is complaint-driven first. In some instances, as I mentioned, it's, maybe the neighbors have changed, they moved in, they no longer like the same building that the previous resident liked, and so therefore, they're going to call and make a complaint in that regard. Sometimes the construction is as such, or it's not being maintained where there's a concern, and so they will call out of concern. So typically, it's, first and foremost, they've built it too close to the property line, the runoff is going into their yard, so please address it. That's the first one. Second would be the height is a concern. And then third would be basically the durability or the construction of materials is causing a safety concern. And so those were the primary three.
Yep, and I think, just to add to that, too, and I think from a code compliance perspective, when they go out there doing a visual inspection, so unless they're invited on the property, they're having to look at the structure to determine if there's a problem meeting the code. And it's easier, it's easier to do a visual inspection, because you know a wall can go up to six feet, eight inches. You can tell that's higher than it. But in terms of the area of that, it's not always easy to do that, right? So it's simpler just to look at the wall, the massing, and the location relative to the property, and so they have to do a visual inspection unless they're invited on-site.
So in that current situation, unless they're invited, so say that the inspector is looking visually and believes there's a violation, are they, do they then pursue that conversation with that neighbor, that resident, or...
Commissioner, Commissioner Villasenor, I'm going to invite our code compliance supervisor to provide a little insight.
It was, it was destiny. Good evening.
My name is Bob Lozier. I'm the code compliance manager for the Neighborhood and Human Services Department. So I'm sitting back there thinking, oh, I want to speak through Chris.
Your moment's coming.
So some really good questions, obviously. So some of the challenges that we find are exactly what Lori mentioned, access. So if somebody digs in their heels and they're not allowing, we're on a neighboring property, perhaps are trying to see it from a right-of-way, and trying to do accurate calculations can be challenging. So our first attempt is always to let the party that's been complained upon know that we have a complaint, and then see if they will cooperate with us. And quite frankly, most people will allow us to do that. So the challenges, as far as the, you know, the step-backs, I think, just generally, and this answering probably a previous question, but it's not so much the angles, calculating the measurements and that sort of thing. It's some of our concerns with some of these other methodologies is creating a lot of nonconformities. So because our code has been in place for so many years, there's a lot of sheds that might have been, or other structures that might have been built without permits, or within the required setbacks, or they're built correctly, and then now we're changing, we're moving that line. So the more we move that line, the more nonconformities we'll have to be doing a lot of research on and trying to determine in those cases, is this something that existed before the code went in? Did it meet the code at that time? Is it meeting the current code? And how to reconcile that without, you know, disrupting...
I'm glad you brought that up, because I was actually, that was one of my questions, is should we change some of these? How are we going to handle some of those accessory structures that would now be in violation? that would now be in violation?
So Commissioner, that's a great question. And when we write, if we were to move forward with a code adjustment, we would say as of X date, this criteria applies. We have the ability to write in and have aerial photography on a regular basis. And so we would need to determine through aerial photography and other research, through building permits, et cetera, whether the structure was in place prior to the code changes and then continue that research. Was it permitted correctly? Was it located correctly, et cetera? So it is a much more time-intensive effort on the part of staff to even provide that analysis to get to that question.
Sure.
Is it?
Well, and I'm also glad that you brought up the technology because that was one of my questions. Couldn't the use of some technology, even like a drone or imaging, help in your visual inspections? I mean, would there be tools like that that are helpful to just enforcing the current code? I mean, if you're not so much a fan of three and four, what might we be able to do to just enforce what's on the books now?
Commissioner Viasenior, the simple answer is yes. Technology certainly does help us. What we take, we don't have drones right now. So we do take advantage of, as Lori mentioned, aerial photography. And those are, they have fly dates. So I think to her point, we would probably want to match up an effective date with an aerial fly date just so we kind of draw that line that anything before that, that date and after would be treated appropriately with the codes that were in place. We also, I mean, the advent of street view is a great thing.
Yeah.
Especially for structures that have been there for a long time. Because one of the things that an aerial does not depict is what it looks like from the street and from the surrounding areas. We can see a structure there, but we're not, we can't always tell, depending on the quality, what structure is there. Because sometimes we see people demolish them and put something else there that may or may not meet the same requirements. So the combination of the two and then actually just our case documentation, sometimes when we're working in that area, sometimes captures those. But in combination, we're usually able to tell, is it the same structure? What's the height? And was it there at this certain date? So that is what we use. We'd certainly entertain having more tools.
So would the answer then be that there would be individuals that are grandfathered in, if you will?
Commissioners, Commissioner Viasenior, that's absolutely correct. So we have lots of situations. They would just, they would, they're not in violation of the code. They're just grandfathered, right?
Okay. I have other questions, but I don't want to hold up from other people right now.
Thank you. Obviously, because this is a study session, the one thing I would ask is, because you've provided us with four fairly detailed charts, is if you could send us a copy of those charts so we have time to digest them? Because there's no action being taken tonight. It'll allow us a takeaway. Time to review those charts?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, you are correct. We can certainly do that. I think there's a briefing sheet as part of the staff agenda. What we'd like to do, though, tonight as part of the study session is get your input as to what, you know, what option, if any, that you're leaning towards or makes sense to you to help us hone that a little bit if we move forward on this item.
Okay. Commissioner Viasenior, do you have more?
I do.
Oh.
Okay, go for it. Please.
Just a couple more comments. I like to know the entire background and kind of what's happening so we can make an informed, or at least give you an appropriate suggestion. So as a way of background, why are we even here today? Are we having like an aborbitant number of complaints recently? Are we short-staffed in inspectors? Like, is there something happening that has precipitated the conversation to take a look at this?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, there are really two points that, as we started out, we were looking at this. And this went to our council code committee. And some of the concerns were that we had was, number one, when we presented the existing structure, it's a little, it's a little convoluted, you know, because it mixes two different sizes, a 200 square feet and a 300 square feet, and there's three tiers. So we really were looking to simplify it without creating additional non-conformities. And then secondly, there was a concern that, you know, there were a lot of complaints of structures coming in and they might have been put in place years ago. And how do we deal with those? And so really, it was a way of, hey, take a fresh look at it. Can this be simplified? And so that was really the impetus as we started the process.
Okay, I can appreciate that, absolutely. My last question, I believe, I have is, what does the city do to educate the public about these codes? You know, how does someone, I mean, the average person doesn't think to call the city and say, hey, I'm going to buy this tough shed that's sitting in front of Home Depot and deliver it to my backyard. So are there things that we do regularly as a city, a municipality, to educate the public?
Do you want me to take?
Oh, go ahead.
So one of, one of the primary goals of the officers that I oversee is to do exactly that. Provide the education, lead with education. We all know that we live in communities where we might not know every law or every regulation that applies. So we go out on these complaints with that in mind and try to make sure we're covering all the bases. So one of the things we really emphasize with our officers is making face-to-face contact. I can send you a letter or I can send you a document or a flyer or some kind of depiction, but everybody reads that differently. And so having that conversation along with hopefully the access on what we're dealing with goes a long way in resolving. And we have, we average about 98% voluntary compliance. So once that person's informed through education, through formal notification, we resolve those cases at a very high rate. So the education piece is always there. Our partners in our, in our other departments, our subject matter experts, when it gets complicated, join us. And we'll bring folks in to meet. If it's complicated, it needs building permits, it needs engineering, and it has a setback issue. So we do that quite frequently. And typically, you know, when we provide reasonable time to make those adjustments or bring the property into compliance, that's what gets it done. So lead with education and then make sure we're providing notification and reasonable timeframes.
Yeah, education is key. I think I would encourage staff, though, to think about maybe proactive ways to educate the community, whether it's through the water bill or newsletter, websites. I could see there even being opportunities at, you know, local places, like a Lowe's or a Home Depot or whatnot in terms of here are the restrictions or the codes, whatever it might be. Because I can appreciate what we're doing reactively. But again, you are, there's so many challenges there and whatnot. So that's that comment. I have one other comment that I'll just throw out there. I am definitely uncomfortable with there not being any setback on something being seven feet. If the maximum a wall could be is six, eight, I think anything that's taller than that has the potential for water runoff or, you know, any kind of site obstruction or visibility nuisance to nearby neighbors. I'm not looking for any large setback, but I'm just uncomfortable with allowing anything up against the wall like that permanently. That would be taller than what our walls can even be built to. Just my comment for now. But thank you so much for answering the questions.
I know you want feedback, but we do have one speaker request form. So maybe we hear from Mr. Went again. And so I'll open the public meeting. Shane Went. For the record, state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Shane Went. 10552 West Jesse Lane. I live in the Willow District. I believe what you've talked here is not good because every single thing is going to be non-conforming. If you go right now and you go to clubs, Costco, buy a pergola, they're all over eight foot. Let me repeat that. They're all over eight foot. So every single person in my neighborhood, non-HOA, is over eight foot. And they're near the property lines. So right now, if you were to say any of these, you're going to say everybody right now is non-compliant. So think about that. We're talking non-HOA residents here. As pointed out before, 80% of Peoria is HOA. So why would you make this more restrict in the non-HOA neighborhoods? The HOAs, you can get your eight-foot, your setbacks, your seven-foot. Right now, these, all these rules are here and not, sorry, are non-conforming because everybody is over eight foot and they're near the property line. That's the reason I moved to non-HOA. So I could have a seven-foot wall shed. Seven-foot wall shed are all going to be over eight foot again. Granted, you can buy a six-foot shed, walled shed, and that will be under your eight foot. I consider those HOA-specific accessory structures. Pergolas, same thing. You can buy under eight-foot pergolas. Those are specifically for HOAs. Why would you want to restrict the non-HOA environments, now making everybody non-conforming and making it harder? So I'm going to say once again, a nine-foot, 200 square foot, place it wherever you want. This would help definitely the coding people right away. They can spot that eight-foot stud. They can see a six-foot or six-inch on top of that pergola. I know that's not over nine foot. Right now, the problem is, hey, I go to Costco, my pergola is eight foot, two inches. So now I got an inspector coming on my property going, oh, you're two inches over. What I consider obtrusive is maybe nine or 10 foot. But what's intrusive is having an inspector come on your property and say you're one inch over that eight foot. And I just bought my thing from Costco, Sam's Club. They're all over eight foot. Think about that. And so if you drive through any of these neighborhoods, you'll see the pergolas all along the property lines. So if you were to put any of these things into effect right now, everybody would be non-conforming. And I think that was part of the city council back in 2020. This has been open since, that they wanted two things. One conformity, two easy, easy. Let's not tier this out. And so what I'm trying to say again is, nine foot? You guys may think that's obtrusive, but in a nano-HOA, that's what I signed up for. I don't want city coming in here and saying, I can only have a six-foot shed. I'm going to hit my head on the shed. That's why I wanted the seven-foot wall shed. That's why I want my pergolas. And this is shade we're talking about. Extremely important to the residents, shade. All these are things are sitting, the Ramadas are on the property lines, pergolas are on the property lines, the sheds are on the property lines. If you're saying everything that's over eight foot is non-conforming, everybody's going to be non-conforming right now. I don't think you can ever grandfather everybody in because you don't have a record. If they were all permitted structures, you would have records. So I don't think you can go right now and say, okay, let's grandfather these in, not grandfather these in. That's not going to, that's not really valid. I don't think you can do that. So what I'm going to recommend again is a nine-foot, 200 square foot. Put it wherever you want. That way you have conforming. Everybody here, eight foot five, eight foot six, you're good to go. And then easiness. Inspector can see that from the street and go, I know what an eight-foot stud is. I know you're two or three inches over that. I'm good to go with you. Now if I see that, hey, I can tell if it's nine foot. Definitely can tell if it's nine foot. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Went. No other speaker request forms. I'll close the public hearing. Thank you. Any commissioners have any other questions for staff or comments?
Mr. Chair, just to summarize and perhaps wrap up comments, I do have kind of side-by-side on the tiered system and then the graduated. So we can take one more look side-by-side if you want and open it up for last comments, questions, feedback.
My feedback is if we're getting closer, I'm sorry, I like three and four better than one and two. My two cents. And like I said before, I think we're all about simplicity. We're all about fairness. But we also don't want to be putting things that are detrimental to your neighbors. I think it's a respect thing for the neighbors. Most people get that. So if you'd like to show us option three and four, be happy to look at that again. But I think a takeaway would be if we all, before we come to, come to this room again to make a, actually make a motion to vote on something. It would be nice to have it, to digest it for some time.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, can we ask if there is one area that maybe commissioners are leaning towards or favoring, just to kind of give us an idea if we are finding some level of consensus here? I guess we'd like to kind of get that input.
Commissioner Alsop?
Yeah, I like one and three. I like one because it's the most similar to what was there. I've lived in Peoria for 11 years and never heard one person complain about their setbacks for these accessory units. So I don't really see a need to dramatically change it. I really like three because it's very simple. I think it's probably the easiest for the public to digest. I understand it's probably a little bit more work on the city side, but that is the onus of the government, and I'm okay with that.
Thank you.
You said three?
One and three.
One and three.
Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, I think after hearing all the comments, I'd be more interested in getting rid of the square footage based on your feedback alone. It's, it's really, it seems like it's hard to measure the square footage first and foremost. It looks like, it sounds like most of the time you're measuring off height. So in my opinion, I think that would make it easier for your workforce and for all the staff. I think it would also be easier for the residents[1601.18] I think it would also be easier for the residents to know that they have a height limit when they're going to Costco or Lowe's, that I need to stay under a certain height limit, and it kind of makes it a little more streamlined and straightforward, in my opinion, takes all the convolution and argument, debate out of it. That's just my personal opinion.
Vice Chair Nelson?
He was looking for feedback. I would say I like three and four, I'm agreeing with the Chair on this. I'm struggling with three, only because the setback being none. I think a one foot is not a big ask of residents to set a structure one foot from the fence, so that would be the only thing that would hang me up on that one. In relation to that, option four, I would be open to less of a setback there, perhaps a one or two foot. So, I think there's some, some room for some compromise there, but that's where I'm at. On that, I appreciate you bringing four options to us and giving us some additional things to consider and look at. Thank you.
At the risk of complicating something that we're intending to simplify, how difficult would it be to differentiate between pergolas and sheds? Because I think pergolas are, tend to be more decorative, sheds can be a little blocky, utilitarian.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, that's certainly something that we could write into a proposed code to distinguish open-air structures from structures that have, that are enclosed, I guess.
Just something to look at. Commissioner Villasenor?
Thank you. I think that's a really good suggestion to take a look at maybe differentiating open-air structures. I also agree with my previous colleague that, you know, I tend to lean towards option four, because I'm uncomfortable with the zero setback for a seven or eight-foot building. Again, you know, like a pergola or an open air that is more decorative, you know, again, it's hard because you, I know you have to come up with a clear and distinct, but I'm trying to at least talk through out loud my thoughts. So, for me, three is, I don't like the no setbacks, and for four, I'd be willing to be more flexible on some of those requirements. But my overarching concern with this whole thing is, you said in the beginning that you had key considerations, and it was that the current code is cumbersome, enforcement is challenging, and this is all managed by all three departments. So, you know, what we're doing here today, I can appreciate, is trying to make the code less cumbersome, but it sounds like it might make it even more challenging, so we might be only exasper, or increasing a current challenge or consideration, and then we're not doing anything as it relates to the multiple departments managing this, which quite frankly, could be confusing for the public, the neighbors, or, you know, who's on first kind of a thing. So, I just throw that out there, that, you know, when you're looking to solve a problem, we need to kind of tackle it from all areas, otherwise we might just be creating more convoluted situations for staff, quite frankly, and the residents. And then obviously, my other suggestion about being more proactive in educating residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm kind of, my question was the same as Chair, is that why not separate the pergolas from the, from the structures? If I have a structure right up next to my wall, I'm not happy if it's nine foot tall. A pergola, I was looking at mine today, I'm like, okay, I can kind of see through that thing, I can see my wall, I can see my neighbor still, and if that was on the other side of the fence, and I'm, I don't know how close mine is to the fence, or how tall it is, so hopefully I'm within code, I'm in an HOA, but I think that's a, even, even the ones you buy at Costco that has the roof lines, the roof line isn't nine feet, the roof line, I mean, it starts off at like six feet or so, and then it, and then it goes up. But if you put a shed that's nine foot tall, or whatever, right up next to the fence, or eight foot tall, man, that is, that is, I'm not a happy neighbor, if that's what we're trying to accomplish here. I think that distinction between the two, open air or something that doesn't have side walls, or maybe, I'm not how you write that in there, but I think that would be important to have that distinction. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, everybody. See no other comments or questions, we'll move on to call to the public for any non-agenda items, for our reports from staff.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, great discussion tonight, great feedback, I really appreciate that, really had a great meeting tonight. I do want to welcome again our new Commissioners, Mr. Kunkowski and Mr. Myers, thank you for joining us, thank you for jumping right into a topic we've been discussing, we really appreciate it. Couple things on the board tonight, we don't have any additional meetings the rest of this calendar year, so we want to wish you an early happy holidays and Happy New Year. We will be coming back on the 18th of January for our regular meeting, so I think that's it tonight. Thank you.
Okay, any comments from the Commission?
January 18th.
Once again, I would also like to again thank our new Commissioners, thank you for being with us, and welcome, welcome to the team. So, with that, I will adjourn the meeting.